Went back after the bid process and sent letters to see if anybody wanted to try to do a negotiated sale, and we got no offers there either. So at this point, we'll probably be looking to create a firewood area out there, just to at least get some of the hazard trees off of the road system, since it went no bid, and we'll have to look at fuels reduction projects kind of in the long run out there. Not specific to Trinity County, but we were able to sell our campfire salvage, which is one of the things our foresters have been working on in Butte County. So we did get two bids on that and sold it. We have been continuing to work on the Reading, Indian Creek Fuels Reduction Project, which the second phase has a forestry component to it. So continuing to burn piles into mechanical fuels reduction out there. I think the CCCs have been out on Little Browns Creek doing some roadside thinning, or at least that was the plan as I understood it from our fire guys. And then we're also working on putting into place a pilot system to sell online firewood permits. So since, you know, we've had so many issues being kind of out of the office for a while, we thought it was a good time to try to put together a firewood, online firewood sales. So we'll be working on getting that up and running in the next couple of months. And then, not necessarily forestry related, but we do have a new law officer who came on board. He's finishing his field training, so hopefully he'll be up and running.
There was some other noise there, Jennifer. What kind of law enforcement person?
Law enforcement, yeah. Yeah, so we're back up to two law enforcement officers. The second's finishing his field training, but he should be good to go here in a couple of weeks.
Hey Jennifer, this is Tom Waltz. How much volume came off that Holy Peak sale?
I don't know. I tried to get that total from Heidi this morning, but she wasn't around. But I can find out and get back to you.
And Jennifer, Bob Morris here. Question, please?
Sure.
I see the Cs working on Little Browns Creek. We are very glad to have them and wonder, seems it could be quite a bit heavier removal. Any chance of checking on that?
Yeah, I'll ask Rob to follow up and see kind of what it looks like and then figure out if they're in our prescription or not. So I'll follow up.
Thanks. Above the road, there's lots of four and five inch fir trees that are fairly tall, and they've taken a few, but seems most, it's all understory. It seems most could go to me. But anyway, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else for Jennifer? No? Okay. Why don't we take up Christine Jordan?
Thank you, Pat, and Kelly, and everybody. I did want to convey Jenny Erickson. She's our project leader. Her greetings to everyone. She's unable to attend this today due to other meetings that we're having. But we have definitely been thinking of all of you and just hope you're all staying well and safe. We find ourselves in a very unique situation these last several months, and hopefully everybody has remained resilient through it. For the past collaborative meetings that we haven't participated in, we've always checked in with Scott Russell, Forest Supervisor for the Shasta Trinity, to see if he really wanted us to add to anything that he was sharing, and there hasn't been a request from him. But I felt like it was important for us to check in with you today and just share that we have been continuing to work with the Shasta Trinity on the Pilot Roads and Plantations Project. I'm not sure how much briefing Scott has provided to you on that, but it is their goal to have their NEPA completed before the end of this calendar year. And we are currently reviewing the draft biological assessment that was prepared for that, and we should be finishing up ESA consultation within the next 45 days. So just wanted to share that. And the other activity that we've been working with both the Shasta Trinity and the Klamath National Forest with is developing a fuels programmatic that is targeted to key ridge top areas, wildland urban interface areas, and roadside areas for ingress egress. And I'm not sure how much, if anything, Scott has shared with the collaborative on that effort, but we've been working with Clint Isbell and Kevin Osborne, as well as a dedicated biologist, Bobby Demontay Miller, on this since April 2019. It's a large project area to undertake an analysis for. So we're working, you know, as quickly as we can, and everybody has their other workload too. But just to give you an update that we have been working on that, it's the goal to have that ESA consultation completed by the end of this calendar year. But we're not sure if we'll make that. But that is our goal. And that was my main update.
Okay, great. Thank you, Christine. So questions, comments?
Christine, this is Tom Waltz. Quick question on U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service interactions going on with private landowners. Have you established some new or different guidelines, or how are things looking with private landowners now?
As far as, are you referring to the attachments A and B?
Yeah, NSO.
Okay. Just a second. So Bob Carey in our field office is the primary, and Jennifer Jones are the primary biologists that coordinate with CAL FIRE on providing technical assistance to private landowners for timber harvest plans that come in from either SPI or Michigan, California, or other private land managers. And then we are, so they primarily work with that. There were revisions to the take avoidance guidelines that occurred, and there were some public meetings in Arcata and Redding that kind of rolled those out. There weren't significant changes, per my understanding from Bob, from the prior attachment A and B guidance. But there were some updates to working more collaboratively with private landowners on looking at non-circular home ranges. You know, this is specific to Northern Spotted Owl. But looking at that and getting a little bit more flexibility in terms of, you know, how management activities can occur. That was the biggest change that I saw. And then for, at least in the McLeod area, they're working on a Spotted Owl Resource Management Plan, or SORP, there with the private landowners. I don't know what the status of that is, but it's, you know, it includes kind of that same guidance of, do we have, you know, we have these known owl sites, and what is the habitat configuration around them? And let's, you know, kind of get nailed down what they're using, and it's kind of following that same approach of using that non-circular core and home range based on the habitat that's there, not just an arbitrary circle drawn around a nesting point or activity center. So in turn, I don't know if I'm answering your question, Tom, but Bob and Jen have continued to work with private landowners through CAL FIRE and the technical assistance that CAL FIRE requests from us to review THPs. And then there's also that, the SORP development that's going on.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful, Christine. I appreciate that. The reason I was asking that question is, is again, the flexibility that Fish and Wildlife Service is utilizing with private landowners, especially with non-circular NSO habitat analysis. Hopefully, if, especially as some of these NEPA projects go forward, whether it's on the Shasta T or Six Rivers, that if there are impediments to projects moving forward, that hopefully everybody's looking at all the potential analysis opportunities that are out there.
Great, Tom. Anybody else? Anything else for Christine? Give time for people to unmute. No? Well, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. Thank you. And just a quick follow up on Tom's question. We have been using that similar approach more recently in the past two years on Forest Service consultations, looking at the use of non-circular home ranges where it makes biological sense with the habitat that's there. And an example of that is the Dubicella Plantations Insect and Disease Project that was recently, I think there's a decision out on that. I feel bad that I don't know that for sure, but that's on the South Fork Management Unit. They're just southwest of Wildwood and near Fitz Creek. So thank you.
You're welcome. So, yeah.
Real quick, just a note to those of us that are calling in on their phones. I believe that Arnold Whitridge is on, as well as a few other people, but I wanted to let people know that I muted everybody because the phones tend to be the ones that actually create a lot of feedback and noise. And in order to unmute yourselves, you just hit star six on your cell phone, or your phone, and that will unmute and unmute you. So if you are wanting to, I think that's the easiest way for you to speak up on a phone. I just wanted to let people know about that.
Great, thanks.
Or six.
Star six. Okay. Okay, so how about updates on the Joint Chiefs? I don't know who wants to take the lead. Is that Scott and Ted, or Kristin and Joe and Chris?
Don't jump in. Yeah, I'll take it. Pat, thanks. Good morning, everybody. It's good to see everybody's faces. Haven't seen a lot of people in a lot of time. Pat, I saw you last week, so you look the same.
Right, so I can slip out.
You're still looking good. So Joint Chiefs, we've, I think everybody knows, or maybe they don't know, that we've had a moratorium on prescribed burning on because of the COVID-19 work environment that we're facing ourselves in. And so because of that, you know, we were planning on, on doing some work with Joint Chiefs throughout Weaverville Community Forest. But at this point in time, our emphasis, I think some will like this, we're, we're right now formulating an agreement with the RCD, Trinity County RCD, putting $135,000 into that project. We hope to start this summer when it warms up a little bit. Actually, it's been nice to kind of have this rainy spell. That's been welcome. But the Browns Phase Three Project is the project that, that we want to use the Joint Chiefs money this year. We're focusing on that, and that's going to be thinning, piling, and burning. Of course, burning coming this fall. So we should have the agreement, I think, Kelly, in place to you next week. That's what Laura Graham informs me. And so we would certainly like to proceed with that.
And for clarification, the Phase Three part that this is, is the cable units that were dropped from the commercial, right?
Correct. And there's some other burn units that are not associated with product removal as well. And I should also mention that the Browns Phase Three Project, they will start logging after Memorial Day. We just received confirmation from Warner Enterprises. So there's a little update on that. But just, just for everybody to know that the Browns Phase Three Project, that's where we're going to emphasize our work and efforts this coming year.
Okay, so that's the Trinity River Management Union Unit part of Joint Chiefs. How about South Fork side of things?
Oh, I think I can cover that as well. I have a little more onage in that, if that's okay, Chris. So I did ask the Fuel Special about Tip Firs project. We've been using a lot of Joint Chiefs money on that project as well. And I think the emphasis, again, is going to be on the Browns Phase Three, but there will be some work on Tip Firs a little bit, not as much as we had last year. I don't have an acreage calculation for you. But that seems to be the location that we usually like to go in the last two or three years of Joint Chiefs. And so there's still going to be a little activity there in the Tip Firs, not as much as last year.
Cool. Anybody, anything else to add on to the joint, oh, Six River side of Joint Chiefs? Ted, Kristin?
I'll let Nancy or Kristin give the update on that. They probably have better information than I do.
Yeah, I'd like to let Nancy start, since she's on that. So if she'd like to go ahead. I think you have her muted.
Sorry. She just unmuted.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Okay, Joint Chief. Okay, we've done a modification with the Watershed Center, adding $120,000 to continue fuel break construction. Primarily, we're still pounding away at Kelsey Peak and a portion of First 48. It'll be fuel break construction prescribed fire. A portion of that money is going into wildlife surveys and our forestry services such as Roberts Reef area. We did another modification, adding $125,000 to the RCD, again, continuing fuel break construction and prescribed fire. Both the WRTC and RCD are working together on these projects. And then we did a new cost share agreement with RCD for road maintenance on roads identified under the Community Wildfire Protection Plan by our volunteer fire departments. So there's another $150,000 for them. Some of our larger expenses, we bought, we have a farming tractor that works real well. We bought this little, looks like a yarding winch system for logging small diameter wood off our fuel break. All that wood is going to the firewood gathering site. That was about $5,000. And then, of course, we're buying a lot of hoses and parts to support dump truck, excavator, dozer, all our operations. We rented a skidder. That's helping with our removal operations. So, and then we have a certain portion going to our heavy equipment operator for working Saturdays. So overtime for that. That's primarily where our expenses are going for Joint Chiefs.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. So Kristin, Ted, anything to add?
I'll jump in here real quick. So thanks, Nancy. You know, she really has the details on all that. I've been dealing with some other funding, the soft money from the region, and some Ruth Fire Settlement money, and some of those dollars have augmented the agreements that we have with Hay Fork and the RCD in those agreements that she's handled. So we've been sort of tech teaming that as I'm getting started in more of being, being the district ranger on the district now. So I don't have anything more to add right now about the Joint Chiefs, and I can talk later about some of those other dollars.
Okay, cool. So questions, comment? Ted, anything? Just get you flashed on.
Nope, nothing to add. Thanks.
Okay.
I have a question for Joe. He was talking about some projects not being completed due to restrictions. I was wondering, does that jeopardize any monies if they're not done within the year, the annual allocation?
Yeah, Jerry, that's a good question. I don't think we've, we've vetted that out. I think that's, that's an issue that we still have to work on. And I think that that's, that's one of those issues we'll probably start tackling in the next, probably month or so. I would, I would think that there would be, you know, because of the extenuating circumstances, there would be some relief, given that, or there might be an extension of those funds being used in the next year. That's, that would be.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have a question for, yeah, Bob. For Joe as well. I had a phone call during his talk. Sorry. So Joe, I heard you talk about two Chiefs money used within the Browns. I was surprised. Wouldn't the retained receipts be for that?
We could, we could use retain receipts for that, but, but we felt that right now, retain receipts are a hot commodity. We want to keep those. And so I think the money that's available because of not working on other projects that, because of the restrictions, we felt like this money was the right fit at the right time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything else to add on Joint Chiefs? How about, we don't have NRCS on the call, or Nick?
Yeah, hold on for one second. Somebody joined us on, on the phone with the phone number 707-672-5809. I've unmuted you. Who, who has joined us?
Hey, it's Krista from Mad River.
Oh, okay.
Very good. Okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't Aaron Taylor from NRCS.
Yeah. So we don't really have a NRCS part of Joint Chiefs then at this point. But I just suspect not much movement considering the COVID virus shutdowns and the fact that we're living with, you know, acting ranger over on the coast. So, okay. So if nothing else on Joint Chiefs, kind of to the regular other forestry kind of things, again, we don't have any NRCS today. How about Fuel Break Work Group? You guys been doing anything with appropriate social distance?
I'll start off on that, Pat. We have not met together for obvious reasons. We, I think our group, the Weaverville Fuel Break Group, was really, really active. And so we'll probably pick that up a little bit, maybe, maybe in the summer. Although summer, everybody gets busy, right? In the field. And I think once we lift, get the okay from Governor Newsom to, from the shelter in place, I would imagine everybody's going to get busy. But so the Bowerman Project, we're working on agreement with Watershed Training Center. That's a 1,700 acre project. That's, that was the brainchild, a product of the brainchild of those who are working within the Field Break Group here in Weaverville, on the Weaverville side. So we hope to have the Watershed Training Center agreement in place here shortly to do third party NEPA on that project. Again, I mentioned it's on the north side of our district, around the Bowerman Ridge area, and it's going to contain mostly fuels work, but we do have some product removal embedded within that project. So I think we're excited to have the Watershed Training Center take on this NEPA. It'll be more of a turnkey operation where we'll take every discipline and do the analysis and get that product in terms of a CE decision moment. That's kind of what we're looking at this time. The other, the other aspects to the Fuel Break Working Group, I think we did a pretty good job covering our district, or actually the west side of the Shasta Trinity. We still have a little more work to do and, and maybe making some refinements of those projects. I should say that Weaverville Community Forest Project, which we're still engaged in NEPA, we've had a little bit of a slowdown because of the work environment that we face ourselves in. But that's going to take in the Weaverville, or I should say, the Oregon Mountain Field Break that we identified. And so that's, that's definitely going to be a BLM, Sierra Pacific Forest Service, and I think a little bit with Trinity River Lumber Company matching with those field breaks. So the Weaverville Community Forest Fuels and Recreation Project will probably take in, I would say, 50 to 60% of that planned field break, but that's significant. And so what's significant to us is that portion of the fuel break is what we call the front door to the Weaverville Basin. So it's just on the east side of Oregon Mountain, and so there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. And again, this is, this is a little bit of a rehash of burn areas and also fuel treatments that have not been treated for the last four to 10 years. So we feel like it's a responsibility of the Forest Service to, to start looking at those areas that have not been treated. Initially, the thought was good to create those fuel breaks. But if you don't maintain the fuel breaks, which is really what this project is about, you kind of lose the effectiveness. And so that's what we're trying to do with the Weaverville Community Forest, and pick up that defined fuel break that, that came out of the Field Break Working Group.
So I'm apt to be looking at the computer screen to see who next has the question, and I forget to look to my left. I think Carol has a question.
Hey, Joe. Hi. Couple, well, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the volunteer fire department would like to be involved at some point in the planning and scoping on the Bowerman Ridge project to kind of incorporate some local knowledge on fire. So if you can just keep us in the loop at some point, that would be appreciated. And then the second thing is, peripherally, you know, at the Recreation Committee meeting, one of the requests was to have the NRA to take action on the cannabis grows that are on Bowerman Ridge, that are within the NRA and which are in violation of the county ordinance. So that's also something I think should be followed up because some of the fires are potentially escaped from those grows and should be incorporated into whatever kind of fuel break you're going to come up with.
Yeah, good point. You know, I talked to Tim Saxon this morning, and I, I didn't bring that subject up. We were talking about a variety of things, but that's something that we definitely will engage in, Carol.
So Bob, did you have a question?
Yeah, a little confused. Weaverville Fuel Break Work Group. I'm unaware of what that is. What, what is that, Joe?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the working group that the Shasta Trinity put together. I guess we hadn't talked about this. Maybe I don't have the, the right term, but it's a, it's a Fuel Break Working Group. It's a multi-agency and private industry working group where Sierra Pacific, Trinity River Lumber Company, and the Forest Service have gotten together last year to talk about those opportunities or strategies to mesh fuel breaks together. And in doing so, it just provides more efficiency for implementation.
Bob, let me, let me maybe put a little larger context to this, this whole thing. So there's been a state MOU, develops statewide MOU that includes the, all the land management agencies and the industrial timber companies to look to, to work together to put fill breaks in place across the ownerships. And so that, that's been happening around the state, and there's coordination group going on kind of at various scales. We've got a group that's coordinating for kind of Northern California. coordinating for kind of Northern California, it's, it's, yeah, and then out of that group, we've established some, some what we call local working groups that are in focused in the Bagley area and in the Cal Fire Reading area and in the Weaville area, and and those groups have been comparing thoughts around fuel breaks and then coming up with priorities for how to work together to to put those in place, and so I don't know that we've figured out a name for those groups, but it's that cross-boundary work we're doing with our neighbors on how we make our fuel bricks connect across land ownership.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
So how about with, how about the broader Fuel Break Work Group that's been working on the pilot project and First Forty-Eight and Acre Wood and that sort of thing, you guys got any updates?
Yeah, we, we had a field trip just last week out to the Ruth Guard Station where we got to take a look at a demonstration of air curtain, which is a large machine that looks like a very big storage container that's had the top of it cut off, and on one end of it's got a motor operated blower, the best way I can describe it, you can go online and look, if you punch in air curtain, you can see videos of them online, but anyways, we went out there to Ruth to get a demonstration of how it was working, and I personally found it pretty intriguing, watching how they had innovated, how they had built this special forked bucket to pick up the the slash and load it into the top of the burner, Dylan was the one who came up with that one out there, and pretty ingenious, I thought, and so we all met out there in the open, all of us appropriately distanced from each other, and talked about the whole thing, Cal Fire was there, a whole bunch of Six Rivers and and some of the Fuel Break Work Group were there, and got a demonstration, and we were standing downwind of the thing the whole time, which you'd never be able to do, it was an actual open burn pile, so I thought that was demonstrated, the lack of pollutant coming from it, although, I mean, you could definitely smell it, you could feel the heat, it wasn't, it wasn't smoking, so it was pretty, pretty cool, and it seems like it would allow them a much bigger window of being able to take care of fuels on the ground, they're still experimenting with it, so there's more lessons to be learned, I'm sure, I asked if it could be drug deeper into the woods to take care of some of those problem places that are way off, where it's not profitable to haul the wood anywhere, and they seem to think it could be loaded on a low boy and taken to remote locations to accomplish some of that burning, so, cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, for the unit, what they said, plus all the, you know, I don't know how much all the auxiliary equipment to feed it costs, but they have an excavator with that, like I said, that specialized fork mouth on it that picks up all the debris. I was, I was intrigued, I think it's got possibilities, I'll be interested to hear Nancy's report on it, you know, six months from now after they've lived with it for a while.
So Larry, let me, can I just jump in a minute, I'd asked Ted, when we were down there, I think they'd run, running it the first day or the first day and a half, so now they've had a week with it, and I was wondering if any of the Six River folks would share more impressions of it, new impressions, new insights, since you're so experienced with it now. Maybe not.
Nancy's just trying to unmute, I think.
Hello?
Nancy?
Yeah, I've got, you know, we do a daily summary sheet, so last week we were averaging, let's say sixteen to seventeen tons daily, yesterday, now we're up in the twenties, and Jay Dillon, our operator, is getting a lot better, in fact, we're burning wetter material, larger material, yet our production is still going up, it's how we distribute the materials, so we mix some of the drier with the wetter, and the other thing is, it's hard to do a production study, we're, we're going to have a burn plan in place so we can move the, the burner offsite or away from the Ruth Guard Station to where we can just start moving it onsite, like Larry was saying, and move it around on skids from landing pile to landing pile, and we anticipate our production to really go up, we're, the Watershed's doing a burn plan for us in Kelsey, which is right here in our Ruth community, and we hope to have that done in the next two weeks, and then we'll be really using it for what it's meant for, we won't have to bring material to it like we're doing now, we'll just bring the machine to the material.
Cool.
Another update, after you fellows left on the, on our field trip, two foresters from the Cal Fire Shasta Trinity Unit drove by, they were on an inspection over here, they stopped in, saw the unit, and they're very anxious to try to get it moved over their direction, Kurt McCray, the unit chief from Humboldtville North, is working on the actual perp permit, right now, all these machines are operating under an exemption, and with the anticipation that we can keep this machine over on this side of the Sierras, on the side of the valley, for a longer period of time, and I'll be in discussions with him on how we can possibly, you know, if you guys feel in need to bring it over there, on that side, we could probably accommodate moving it, so that's something to think about here in the near future.
Two, two other details that I thought were incredible, and I think I have the numbers right, the, the unit can do in one hour what it would take a full day as a burn pile out in woods, and it recaptures, I think it was ninety-eight percent of the particulate matter, so the emissions are just minimal, it was very impressive to see.
So what I wanted to weigh in on with, so apparently Cal Fire purchased six of these statewide, unit belongs to Cal Fires, my understanding, I was kind of prepared to be underwhelmed after reading about it online, but after seeing it, Joe Smales at our last community forest meeting, I don't remember the exact number he threw out, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, something like fifteen days of burning in the Weaver Basin is all that they have per year due to moisture and air quality issues, and Nancy mentioned that eight months per year, this unit could operate, the, for instance, the day we were there for the demonstration, they were out of prescription for burning piles, but yet they were able to utilize this piece of equipment, and I would love to see piles made throughout the basin and then bring this thing over and move them from pile to pile, you could get an amazing amount of volume burned, anytime within that eight-month window versus fifteen days per year as it is now, so I was very impressed with it.
Hey, anything else on that, kind of, we kind of jumped forward to air curtain burner demo, but we got that kind of, anybody else, anything on that air, air curtain burner?
This is Nancy, can you hear me?
Yes.
One more thing, I just wanted to be clear, if we were out burning piles on a semi-raining day and we didn't have to worry about escape, our production would be higher, but we would have a lot of chunking to do, if we had, we might have to have the excavator onsite to take care of all the chunking, it, you know, we would, probably would have burning of adjacent trees to worry about, so quality-wise, the air burner bar none, you really meet the intent of a, of a good landing pile burn, but production-wise, you can burn a lot more in a day, but your window in landing pile burning is a lot shorter, and we're really discouraged doing it in the later part of spring for worry of holdover.
Okay, thank you, Nancy, so we're kind of running a little bit behind our, our schedule, so how about Shasta Trinity, other forestry projects that we care about?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start with that, Pat, so I did mention about the Browns Phase Three, where we will commence activities, harvesting activities after Memorial Day, and right now, you know, we are focusing on Pilot and the Dubicella Project and the Weaville Community Forest, those are the three projects we're working on, you've heard about Corral Bottom and Burt Ranch Projects and and other small, what we call small NEPA projects, but we're trying to focus on these three projects to get the NEPA complete so we can start implementing, we, I might say, I think I said this in one of the Fire Safety Council meetings, that less is more, so we're deciding to focus on these three projects to get them done, with Pilot being the number one project, so on the WCF project, Fuels and Recreation project, you know, we've, we've commenced some field activities, some field surveys this past week, botany and archaeology, I think wildlife, which is one of the larger lifts that we've got to do on this project, they've been able to get out in the field as well, but but really the archaeology portion of this project, that's, that's significant, we have a lot of work to do, and so I think with the progression of our resource protection measures, I think we're in a good place with that for this WCF project, so we want to be able to, you know, take advantage of this field time that we have, I don't know if we'll get caught up with their field surveys this year, but we're going to make an effort to do so. The Trinity Alps Prescribed Fire Project, there's some archaeology issues, I mentioned that before in previous collaborative meetings, and so what that means is, we've got to go out and verify some archaeology sites that were not, that were not included in the project record, so there's probably three or four days, it is in wilderness, so there's going to be a pack trip involved with that, and so that has to be done, you know, later on this, this summer. I should also mention that the Trinity Public Utility District Right-Away Expansion, we talked a little bit about that last collaborative, that still continues, their specialists, they Aspen Environmental, they've delayed their field surveys, but our own resource specialists are engaged in giving them direction on any extraordinary circumstances or just give a little bit of a prelude before they engage in their field surveys, so we've been involved with that, probably on a, probably on a two-week basis that we've been meeting together. And also, I, I, might I say, I haven't seen the agenda, I'm looking over at it right now, but the Trinity County Rack, we talked a little bit about it, Pat, last recreation meeting, with all the retirements that took place late last year, I wasn't aware of the impending retirements and some of the critical people that would approve my rack package, I was real gung ho, I was, I was saying to people, particularly Bob Morris, I was saying, ah, you know, I don't see two years, Bob, I think he was indicating to me that that's what it took last year, but I was gung ho, and I was saying, that's just a couple of months, don't worry about it, you know, we're doing really good, well, here we are, we don't have a rack package, but I'll say this, that the Washington office has hired a, a detailer, a hundred and twenty-day detailer, to, for, for the express purpose of getting these rack packages, I understand there's forty-five rack packages that need to be finalized, that's her, that's her responsibility, and she did engagement, we had a good discussion about a week and a half ago, and so we hope to have something, dare I might say, maybe in the month of June, that's what she was indicating to me, but no promises, but anyway, we have somebody on that package and that makes me happy to do so. That's, that's what I.
Questions for Joe?
I heard a rumor that you've hired an archaeologist?
Yes, 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 well, we.
Congratulations.
They're, they're not in place, it's a GS eleven vacancy that we had, and we, we hope to make an announcement here very soon, that's, that's Chris Losi's area, but that's good news, but let me say this, is that with the GS nine that we do have, Kim Stahl, and the GS eleven, that, that'll be a good dynamic duo, I think we'll be able to get more done, we'll pick up some of these special use projects that have been lingering forever, and we'll be able to pick up maybe some of the small NEPA projects that are really important, but more than that, I think the, the Pilot Project, the Dubicella Project, and the WCF Project, I think we'll have greater capacity to get these projects out the door, and so the Fisheries Biologist Vice, Phil Faschella, we, we had a little bit of a hiccup because of a supervisory position description, but as of yesterday, we got that sorted out, so I will be putting an outreach out for the GS eleven fish biologists, we do have a vacancy also for our special uses, some of you may know, may not know, that Lisa Rinn did retire after a long career with the Forest Service, she left, but the good news is, she came back on a contract basis, working twenty hours a week, so she's helping us, it'd be nice to have her for you, but hey, I'll take the twenty hours, no, no problem, but we did, I should say, I was able to put an outreach out for the GS eleven Special Uses Lands Officer this past week, so hopefully this summer we'll have some success in putting people in those seats, and they would be located in the Weaville office.
Great, so Chris, how about South Fork Management Unit Forestry Projects?
Hi, folks, I, I think I met most of you, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I think, I think I've met most of you through the pretty TCC rec meetings, but, but in case I haven't, I'm an acting district ranger for South Fork, I started on March first, what a great time to, to come into the leadership role, right, so I've been working from home, my house in Reading, since late March, but, you know, I'm really glad to be working with the folks that, that work on the South Fork, some really good people, working really hard, trying to figure out how to balance the craziness that we're experiencing with a pretty heavy workload, I wanted to tie in to a couple of things, I think it's amazing you guys heard about an archaeologist, because I think most of our staff hasn't heard about archaeologists, but, but yeah, we're moving, we're moving pretty, we've gotten to a good spot on that, we expect, we hope that late June, early July, we should have a new district archaeologist, or west side archaeologist really, to cover both PRMU and SFMU, also, you know, Joe was mentioning outreaches, we, we've also outreach a timber management officer, and we've also outreach a second NEPA coordinator for the west side, so that we won't have to rely on, on one individual for all NEPA, and so that we don't have a single forester handling both the planning and the implementation, that those are going to be huge, you know, I think it's great, Christine Jordan's on the, on the call, we're doing a lot of good things with them, Fish and Wildlife is, is, you know, helping, helping us work through some, some clever solutions, and, you know, Christine mentioned the Dubicella Project, and just to clarify, so what happened was, right before we were prepared to sign the decision, we realized that we had some archaeology issues, and so what we did was, we signed, we approved half of the project, and that was the project I built, that half, I believe, was the portion that depended on joint chiefs funding, so we were able to sign that at the end of 2019, and begin work on the non-timber sale portion, the fuels portion, and the reason we weren't able to finish, the archaeology was concerned with snowing, we We actually started surveying the remainder of the archaeology portion last week, I believe. And so, by early June, we will have, we have no problem in getting the second half of the decision complete. And with that comes timber sale, we're calling it the pine root timber sale that comes out of Dubicella. Pilot also, we've made a lot of progress. That was one of my top priorities, if not my top priority as Ranger. And we've made a lot of good progress. We have submitted a preliminary BA to Fish and Wildlife Service for the Pilot Project, and we've kind of tentatively heard it looks good. We expect to hear back from them very soon. But we don't anticipate any problems with that. We're working with them on a new smoke management process to allow us to burn, you know, Christine could possibly talk about it if she wishes, but it basically gives a little more flexibility in how we burn. And then I just, you know, there was a little discussion about the air curtain. I just want to throw something out there. I think it's probably obvious, but I just want to, you know, throw that out there, just so it's said. You know, I worked, I used to work on the San Bernardino. We used air curtains on the San Bernardino, or at least they did in the area, a lot. They can be a great tool, but as you know, you know, you really, you need to feed these machines with a lot of, you need to feed these machines with heavy equipment. And so, you know, there's a limitation when you come into a place where you're not, you can't use heavy equipment. And of course, there does remain certain level of concern about using heavy equipment on the landscape for things like piling and other sorts of things. So, certainly, you know, the ability to use these air curtain burners to some degree is controlled based on our ability to use heavy equipment on landscape, depending on how much we want to use it. So, just a thought, just something to throw out there, because it can be a great tool, in my experience, but it's limited. It can't be, you know, you can't use it everywhere. Anyway, that's what I wanted to share.
Okay, so, I'm going to, so one thing I haven't heard about at all today on the South Fork side is the Hay Fork Community Protection Project. I see Larry is here, but he's muted at the moment, so I'll just jump in. Is there any movement action going on on the Hay Fork, the Hyam Palm Community Protection Project?
Yeah, Hyam Palm, right. I was hoping that was who you're talking about, because otherwise I was going to have to say, I never heard of that project. No, you know, Dan Ostman, that's a big concern of his. We have a lot of interest. We've been developing, we've been doing, you know, what we like to call left-side analysis, developing a proposal. I think right now, given that our priorities are Dubicella, which should be done very soon, but after that Pilot and Weaville Community Forest, you know, we can't, there's only so much we can be dealing with right now. So, we would have to wait until those two are much further along to really start jumping into that. And then, of course, there's Bowerman. So, probably Hyam Palm falls after, well, it definitely would fall after Dubicella Pilot, Weaville Community Forest, and to some extent, Bowerman. Not to say that they all need to be complete, but I feel like, I think we need to get further along with those before we can really start to jump into that. We've only got one fuels planner, and he's working on, you know, Dubicella Pilot and I think Bowerman. So, yeah, so, it's definitely there. We definitely want to work on it. We've been, I know from Dan, our fuels specialist, we, you know, the community is very concerned, is not very concerned, but the community has actually been working with us very well, and we've had really good relations with Hyam Palm. We're also, so, so that's a really positive thing. And also, wanted to mention, I don't think it's come up yet, but we are working with the Watershed Center on both the Bowerman Bar, Bowerman Field Break Project and the Hyam Palm Project, and we have some funding for the Hyam Palm Project. But, you know, it's probably going to look like not a lot's going on for the next few months, because, you know, the kinds of stuff that's going on is pretty internal, and there are other things, kind of, much closer to the finish line.
Okay, thank you.
Pat?
Yeah.
I saw that Joseph and Susan Bauer raised their hand. There's a symbol for them having raised their hand. Joseph?
Oh.
I did, it was quite a while back, and I think I can just get it answered later on, because it's not pressing right now. It's about the ash production and what's done with the ashes from the air curtain. But we don't need to go back there.
Well, we're going down to Six Rivers next, and it says air curtain burner, so we can wrap it up there.
Okay.
They agree.
Let me remind people too, that are coming in, the star six is what mutes or unmutes your line.
So, any questions for Chris? And I don't get to see the little hands being raised, I guess. So, you'll have to tell me, Kelly, if somebody does that.
Okay.
If not, then Six Rivers, non-Joint Chiefs, not First 48, anything other stuff, and ashes from the air curtain burner.
Well, I am muted, but Nancy probably can answer that better. So, I'm going to let her, because I'm not sure what they're doing with the ash.
Nancy and Krista are both unmuted?
As far as the ash, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, was the question ash from the air burner, what we're doing with it?
Yes.
Thus far, we haven't accumulated anything that's even warranted us moving the air burner. The air burner is empty on the bottom. And the ash, at least at this time, will this take a log, roll the skid over the top of it to deposit it on site? And we'll just probably spread it around right there on site.
Okay, Susan, do you have anything, any follow-up to that?
I'm wondering if you have any rough idea about the volume of ash to the volume of input? I take it very little.
Correct, very little. When we finally do empty it, I'll have the full tonnage burned and can probably give you an estimate of the square foot of ash deposited compared to the tonnage burned.
And unlike coal-burning ash, I take it it isn't poisonous?
Correct. In fact, this kind of ash, that they're using it, gosh darn, the word has evaded me, it is called...
IO char.
Char, yeah, the char. And they're selling it for soil amendment for $120 per cubic foot.
Right. I use it at home.
Yeah, so it's used in natural forest setting for landscape, say restoration, and of course landscaping, you know, otherwise. So, yeah, it's a good thing, very good.
Okay, great. So, other Six Rivers projects, so Ted, Krista, and Krista, Nancy. You guys jump in.
Okay, well, I'll jump in. I think I got unmuted quicker than anybody else. So, and I'll try to be mindful of our time and keep it short. So, the First 48 has been, the logger and the purchaser have been operating on First 48. Last I checked, they were about 70% done, and they're probably further along than that now. We brought back on our Harvest Inspector Heather Murphy to help out our cell administrator, and so, that keeps things rolling along a lot better for everybody too. So, she came back on about a month ago. So, then, our other project, Acre Woods, we have a field trip scheduled with your working group on Tuesday of next week. And so, we're looking forward to that. I'm going to be sending out our risk assessment, a little bit more information for the field trip. So, under this COVID, in order for us to get together and meet and do work, we have a risk assessment process in place, just to make sure. It's kind of like a JHA, but a little bit more in-depth. And Krista has been helping me work that up. So, I'll be sharing that probably later today. So, we're excited about seeing you guys next week and taking a look at that mark. Ted did sign the decision memo this week for Acre Woods. So, that was a big milestone of success, I think, for everybody to move that forward. The check crews is not yet finalized. There were a few little housekeeping issues with the contractor that did the mark and some of our mapping that we need to finish up before that check crews will be finalized on that. Trinity River has, is intending to operate this year. I haven't heard anything different from our Timber Contracting Officer Tara Jones, but they are prepared to continue operating on First 48, Beaverslide Kelsey, and D-70. So, their intentions are to continue working. And in order to support that, the forest worked early on to make sure that we could safely do owl surveys for our projects that are under contract, about to be under contract or operating. And so, Hay Fork is our, Watershed Center is our main owl crew. I'm working with Krista. And so, they did start the week before last, of course, we had all this rain this week, and so they had to take a break. But we, you know, spent a lot of time working up safety protocols in light of COVID to make sure that everybody could do their work safely. So, we felt that that was a success, that we were able to get that going. So, that's going on. A little bit more about Spotted Owl is that the region last week had a, there's Diana Craig, and it came out from the directors, how to move forward with owl surveys and our relationship with Fish and Wildlife Service. So, of course, it's still being developed, but we have a very strong leader with Brian Yost and a very good relationship with the Arcade Office. And so, we're working on a, you know, a day-by-day basis on the best way to move forward, not only our projects that are currently under contract, you know, being implemented, but our planning process for our new projects moving forward. So, you know, go slow to go fast. And I think that that's what we're doing in order to keep everybody safe. But it was very promising, you know, to have that dialogue there. In terms of, you know, I know there's a little bit of talk about funding and people worried about money's being lost, funding being lost. We've worked really hard to make sure that we, all the funding that we have is being obligated in an agreement or some sort of vehicle so that we don't lose that money. We were granted some extensions, which I needed for the agreements that I'm working on, until the end of this month. And so, you know, we'll have all our funding tied up in agreements and obligated in one form or another. So, we did receive, or Mad River did receive $180,000 of regional money, soft money for some, for project work. And we have agreements, as Nancy mentioned, with Hay Fork and the RCD, but also with NCRC, who is doing a lot of our work as well. And so, I have that, those monies. And then, there was some monies left over from the Ruth Fire Settlement, about $30,000 that needed, we were in the third year, and I didn't want to ask for an extension. So, we were getting that money tied up in an agreement with Hay Fork. And then, we were unsuccessful in being able to fill a GS-5 Forestry Tech. And so, instead of losing that money, Hay Fork is going to fulfill that for us with the money that was earmarked for that position. So, you know, it's, they're our crew, and we have a great relationship with them. And I'm thrilled to be able to get them to start working here pretty soon. Then, in terms of some of our other positions, our other big exciting is that we have a SAF recent grad forester who is finishing up his year of training at the district, and he will be converting into an 18 and 8 Professional 579 Forester on the district. And so, he's been a great addition to our workforce, and we're excited to have that position filled. Also, there was outreach for my position. So, because we're, you know, obviously, now that I'm in the district ranger role, we're down the lead forester. And so, we will be filling behind me in that position. And so, I think we'll be well-stocked with foresters once we get Levi and we get that filled behind me. And of course, we still have Shirley. And we've got a lot of support from the Supervisor's Office with Jeff Jones. He has taken up the civil culture and some of the tasks that I would have been doing. And so, he's helped out a lot with that. And he will be on the field trip on Tuesday, so you'll have a chance to chat with him a little bit more on that day. Some of our other, you know, we are sort of low on positions, but, you know, I'm thrilled that we've gotten the authority to go ahead and fill, because we don't have an archaeologist. We're looking at a pathway student who's just finished up her masters, and hopefully this will work out. We'll be able to bring her on as a 9/11 and very quickly have her up to that journey level, archaeologist on the district. So, other staff on the forest has been filling in that role for us. So, we'll have that. We've outreach for a 9/11 Fish Wildlife Biologist. So, hopefully, our very good candidate will successfully compete for that position. And so, I'm trying to think if there was, oh, well, we don't have a division chief either. So, that has been very stressful for me. All our fire staff has fallen under Seth Torpe, who's also doing our LE work. So, he's Battalion 41. So, I'm hoping that we get that filled, because we've been without a division chief and moving into fire season. And as you know, we've already had nine fires. Eight of them were pile burns on private that escaped, that we responded to. And then, we had one fire, the horse fire, that's under investigation, that were piles that appeared to be ignited by, other than lightning. So, I am worried about that. The rest of our fires engines are three engines, and the hand crew are fully staffed. So, that's good. Oh, the other part of the hiring is, we have a Peace Corps Authority. This was kind of new and exciting, and all the Peace Corps were pulled back from their postings overseas. And I've been getting, so, for a range tech, which we haven't had a range tech for a while, and a rec tech. And so, I've been getting resumes from super interesting people that are, that would like to work for us. And so, I have made a very, very tentative job offer to an individual for the range technician position, which, you know, we're all, with our range, that ties right into our oak woodlands. And with the background that she has, I'm hoping that it'll work out. But it's sort of a weird hiring authority, so we'll have to wait and see what happens through ASC and HR for that. Yeah, so, I said I was going to be quick, and I don't know if I am or not. I'm trying to be. And so, you know, those are our projects moving forward. I see the next on the agenda is you're going to go to the RCD, and then you have the First 48 Field Trip Assessment. So, I'll definitely hold off on that. But I just wanted to mention, you know, Randy Moore, our Regional Forester, has been having... our regional forester, has been having weekly or bi-weekly calls with everybody. And he's been very clear that that target is not our first priority right now in this short amount of time. And that being said, it is very difficult for all of us that are so heavily invested in these projects to, I don't want to say believe that, but, you know, to give that up. And so I think Mad River has been very innovative in getting work done in a safe manner. But we are going slow to go fast. And we have individuals with different levels of comfort for what's going forward. We have individuals that are compromised, you know. And so it's been a huge workload, but we're, we haven't talked about it. I know it's on the agenda later on. We are taking it very seriously and being very cautious how we move forward. So I know it can be frustrating because it seems like it's steps going too slow, but it'll be good for us in the long run. We'll be set up very well to move forward. So I'll say end of report unless there's any questions.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Kristin? And just a reminder, Jerry, go ahead.
Kristin, I just don't know the position title, range tech. What are their responsibilities? What do they do?
Yeah, that's the rangeland technician. So they're the individual that's in charge of the, I wouldn't say in charge, but the range allotment, the livestock on the forest. But yeah, the water monitoring that goes on with that. So, yeah, of course.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? And just a reminder, it's now 11:25, and so we got 35 minutes to kind of get our business done. Every time a squirrel goes by. Anyway, so Kelly, what do you have that is new to add?
I'll be real quick. As Joe and Nancy and Kristin mentioned, we are working currently on two new agreements, one with Shasta Trinity National Forest and one with the Six Rivers National Forest. 135 on the Shasta T side, which I just read may be extended somewhat more with some additional funding for pile burning in the brown phase three, well, the cable units that is continued from that particular sale. And then for Six Rivers National Forest, which will be a modification to an agreement that we began last year. We will be also working on some California Fire Safety Council grants. We're now receiving advances from CalFire on some of our fire prevention grants, which will allow us to get started. We have also been somewhat trepidatious with the situation to getting our crews back on. But we have a very tentative date that we're now working towards, which is June 1st for our actual beginning date for our field season, which we feel like is doable at this point. We're just now acquiring PPE, masks, gloves, you know, disinfectants and things like that, so that we can be putting workers in trucks together and figuring out how to get all that stuff in order so that we can be safe and do the work that we want to be doing, which we feel is now sort of moving along quite well. And so we're cautiously optimistic. June 1 will be our start date. We also have a new project coordinator, too, which is sort of the top of the department for both the forest health and our revedge departments. The revedge department will get their coordinator probably within the next week or two. And on the forest health side, we have, I guess, I guess she graduates tomorrow or next, I think the 17th or something like that, from California, Cal Berkeley Forest School of Forestry. She is not an RPF, but she will be working towards that. And with some of the connections that we have and the folks that we, some of the foresters that we work with, we feel like she'll be able to have a good career path towards that, the goal of becoming an RPF with her doing work with us. So we're pretty excited to have both those positions filled. And, yeah, I've mostly just been trying to adjust to sort of the new normal and getting ready to gear up. And we've been moving along after some stutter stats in the early part of April. We're poised to really rolling, going slow to go fast, as Kristin mentioned. So I think that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Kelly? And I don't think we have anybody from the Watershed Center. We'll just move on. So one of the agenda items requested at the last meeting was a discussion on the First 48 field trip. So I don't know who is taking the lead on that, but let's try to.
Joseph has something to say, so.
Okay.
Joe and Kristin are unmuted.
Hi, this is Joseph. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, good. Well, I brought it up at our last discussion. And what I was concerned about partly is getting taken care of, and that is that the buyer is actively working on the project. What I did have some concerns with was Nancy was telling us it would probably take about three years to get all the fuels work done. And there's no mention about doing the plantations, which are supposed to be an integral part of our prescription is fuel break and plantation work. And how the funding might go for that, it seems like it's, you know, the work group recommended stewardship contracting. Well, it seems that, you know, Forest Service has reasons they don't want to do it that way. But I'm wondering about how we're going to retain enough money to go back and treat these portions of the roads and plantations that are not going to pay their way to treat. So it seems like the money coming from the timber is absolutely essential. And I'm wondering when, how we're going to hold on to it and when we're going to get the fuels and plantation work completed.
Okay, so who wants to take a lead? Nancy?
I was trying to unmute.
Okay, Kristin.
So I was trying to see if I could quickly pull up the KV plan for First 48, but I can't. I have too many windows open and where to find it. But, you know, the plantations, we did have some plantations that were included in commercial, the older plantations that were going to get treated. You know, we were doing KV collections for road work and fuels work, which would include the TSI in the plantations. So, you know, with the great progress that the purchaser is doing, I expect that we'll have those KV funds sooner rather than later. You know, we only have so many people. We have a great setup with our agreements, you know, with Bridgeville and with Hay Fork and the RCD. And, you know, we're working as fast as we can. So, you know, really, I think, frankly, in my opinion, I think three years is actually pretty quick, and it'll probably be done before that. So if Nancy's still on the phone and would like to weigh in on that, I yield the floor.
Well, I'll jump in real quick.
Am I on? Real quick. Can I, Joseph, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, here, Joseph. Actually, one of the reasons, on the first road we visited, there are, I believe, one or two plantations. The subdivision was still closed. So we're not allowed to treat until the timber harvest subdivision is open. I do plan on moving the Watershed Center in there. In fact, we were until the COVID hit. So that, it will be paid for via joint chief. We will be, with that sale, we will have additional KV money to do fuel treatments in plantations as well. But we don't want to get ahead of the purchaser because what happens is if we treat a plantation and they log next to it, then they put more debris back into the plantation, and we have to clean it up again. So basically, we need the purchaser to finish up, have a subdivision close prior to us entering into those areas.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other thoughts on that?
One thing I did want to add real quick is, along those lines of doing our best to speed up treatment, is we are working on putting together a fuels implementation crew. So the long-term plan is to have a 20-person crew that works across the six rivers to implement fuels work. We're starting this year. It's much smaller. We only have maybe five or six folks on the crew. But that's another way we're looking at kind of moving ahead and moving a little bit faster as time goes on to get this important work done.
Okay. Joseph, anything else?
No, you know, that seems like we're moving in the right direction. I'm just an impatient person. I liked to see it done yesterday, and I'm anxious to see what a completed project really looks like with all the fuels cleaned up and plantations thinned. I mean, we've been talking about this for eight years now. It'd be good to finally see a project completed.
Gotcha. So I would hope that hiring would become a little bit easier with almost 30 million people unemployed in the country. But we'll see. So anything else on the First 48? If not, another request from the last meeting was an update on, kind of, I guess, the.
Pre- K, over at the burner?
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're on call.
Predictions on fire season? Anybody going to make any predictions on fire season?
Supposed to respond.
It's going to be busy.
Going to be busy, yeah.
Just, you know, and I'll just touch briefly on it. You know, my anticipation is that we're going to have a fairly busy fire season. And how we respond to that's going to be very challenging, given, you know, the concerns about getting people sick in our response efforts. But we are going to, the chief of the agency has kind of given clear direction. We're going to do our best to respond quickly and suppress the fires that we get when they're small as much as possible. We're going to need to probably rely on local resources. So the, you know, the local volunteers, the Shasta T, the Six Rivers, Clamath, Mendocino, we're all going to kind of work together to provide what resources we can to address these and work with our partners in CalFire. So, you know, it's not, there's a lot of unknowns, but I anticipate it being a busy season, and we're going to do our best to keep up with it.
Yeah, you know, go ahead and just, you know, add on a little bit there to that. You know, like Ted said, very dry conditions. You know, we've got a little bit of respite with this one front, but that's only going to delay things a short amount of time. We're already starting to see fires and more activity than usual. So like you said, we're expecting a very busy fire season with dry conditions. And then on the COVID side, I think, you know, at all levels of the agency, we've developed a set of best management practices for suppressing fires with COVID as an added hazard with all the others that they face as they do this work. And already, our crews are out using those best management practices and learning from those. And we feel really good about our ability to learn from that and be successful this year. We also recognize how critical it's going to be this year to catch fires as small, knowing the complications that come with large extended events and the challenges of camps and all of that. So it's going to be a challenging year, but I think we're ready for it.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Go ahead.
To just add to that, too, this coming Monday, the Clamas National Forest is having their annual Joint CalFire US Forest Service preseason wildfire briefing. And those are always really informative. They have staff there from predictive services, as well as the normal forest unit fire leaders that give an update. So just the Shasta Trinity National Forest do something similar, Scott?
We usually do. The volunteer fire departments usually are there. Last year, it was in May, though, and we have not heard anything about doing it this year. But we have been working with CalFire.
Okay.
So there's a whole series of inter-agency meetings that happen going into the fire year, and we're trying to figure out how to do that. We've got statewide meetings that we do with our partners. And then we've got meetings in Northern California. And then we have meetings like what Christine talked about there, kind of more specific to individual forests, you know. So all those are happening. And, you know, some of those are virtual, and we're going to figure out how to, you know, do that better with these virtual platforms. But, yeah, there's a whole list of various preseason meetings that occur with us and our partners and getting ready for the year.
Yeah, and just adding to that discussion, you know, I don't think we have a whole lot of time left for the meeting today, but I'm just going to say that one of our first challenges as far as firefighters is bringing them on, the seasonals from every parts of the country. I would say mostly from California, but working with Trinity County, which we have here on the west side, there was concern of the potential of bringing the contingents within the county. But, you know, so far, the onboarding has gone very well. We have a daily screening process that we perform in the morning, and where we take the temperature for those who are reporting to the engine bays. And it's working quite well. So the other issue is the barracks. Where are we going to put all our seasonals in the barracks? We've changed from two per room to one per room within a barracks facility. So it's, there's a lot of nuances that come with this COVID-19 and how we adjust. And I would say so far, on the west side certainly, we've done pretty good. It's not been an exercise in perfection, believe me. But I think we've gotten through a lot of the humps in learning as we go along. We know it works, we know it doesn't. But overall, I think we're preparing ourselves to be able to make a good response. And so what Ted was saying is very accurate, that we were going to hit these fires hard early on. And it's just how are we going to do it with the number of firefighters we have, especially in the vehicles responding to fire? We're sorting through that right now. So it's not easy, but we are getting through it. And I have a lot of confidence that, increasing confidence as we go forward, we're going to be successful.
Okay, so go ahead.
Would be extra air resources available this year, considering all of the limitations you guys were just talking about?
Yeah, I could speak to that just real quickly. Yeah, the region has increased the air resources we'll have this year for firefighting preparedness.
Okay, one thing or a comment, I guess, that I have is this year feels very similar to me as 2015. We had, I think, 16 inches of rain at this time of year in 2015, and I think we have 20 now. And the snowpack was almost zero then, and it's not much better now. So the one thing that we discovered in 2015 was that a lot of our ephemeral streams that we used to rely on as a water drafting site had dried up by July in some cases. And so you went through. And so you went through late July, August, and September without, uh, ability to get a lot of your water drafting. So one of the things that we, uh, did at Sierra Pacific is we identified those good, reasonable, um, water drafting sites that we knew that would last throughout the summer and, uh, developed those so that they were able to, um, uh, be able to get trucks and everything in there pretty easily. So I would, I would hope that private and public agencies would be, uh, thinking about those water drafting sites and where are you gonna get water from? Cause that's gonna be, late in summer could be real difficult again.
Yeah, good. That's a good suggestion, Tom. I mean, I know our, the creek, you know, at the bottom of our, our hill is a, a lot lower now than it's been in a number of years, so. Um, so, um, kind of transitioning quickly, is there anything else? People pretty much been talking about the impacts of COVID-19 on program of work and NEPA, but anybody have anything else they need to add to that?
You, you wanna go to, ahead, um, first on that one, Ted, or?
You're unmuted, Scott.
So, um, yeah, I think, I think we've been talking a lot about that all day, you know, around, uh, you know, the disruption of our regular activities. I, I think we've, uh, worked real hard to get good at these virtual pa, platforms and have our teams continue to work, particularly in the planning world. Um, we don't, we don't have yet a, a really good assessment of exactly what it's going to mean in terms of changes this year and what we've been able to, what we'll be able to do. Um, you know, as Christine talked about, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's, is, is, we're, we're gonna come back and we're gonna see where we are and, and get back to work on these critical issues, you know, around fuels and, and, and the risk to our communities and, and to all the resources that we love on the national forest. Um, it, it, uh, but we don't really have an assessment yet that says, you know, what, what has been the effect of COVID on our, our, our program of work and our ability to, to get great work done. But, uh, we're, we're starting to work on that and assess that. Um, I think, uh, all the forests have got risk assessments so that they've come, have restarted field activities, uh, to, uh, um, uh, using those, those protocols. So we're feeling good about that and getting back to work, uh, and, uh, but kind of that, that, that's my summary.
I'll, I'll jump in real, real quick. Um, I just wanted to point out that this, it's not a linear process. So, uh, you know, it's an iterative process for coming back to work under COVID. And so, um, as on a fire, transitions are always a, a watch-out situation, and we're finding that that's happening, um, here, too. So, um, I just wanted to, if it seems like we're moving along and then all of a sudden we stop and it's slowed down, it's because we are reassessing, and sometimes we have to answer the same question that we thought we had already answered because now there's a little bit different situation. So it has added a huge amount of workload to, uh, a lot of people and a lot of stress, and it has, it, it has affected our productivity. Um, and so we are trying to check in with individuals because there is a workload, but we're also people and we need to take care of each other. Um, so I, I just don't want people to think that it's a, an easy linear process, um, to get back to, to semi-normal operations because, because it's not. So, thanks.
Okay. Ted, you have something to add?
Just, just, just real minor, I think, I think, uh, Scott and Kristen covered it well. Um, and, you know, our, our primary, uh, goal is, is to provide for the, the safety of our employees and, and for the publics that, that enjoy the public lands and, and how we do that in a way that, that is not gonna increase the exposure potential, um, for a very real issue. Um, we're fortunate that it's not real prevalent out here, but we don't want it to become that way either. Um, one, one minor thing that I wanted to add was, um, uh, just so you're aware that, that we have suspended our fuel wood pro, uh, permit program, so fuel wood is free, um, no permits required, and that's, that's continued until the end of the month, and then we're gonna reassess at the end of the month moving forward. The, the rules for how you acquire it are still the same, so you need a, you know, people that get it need to get it within the rules of our, uh, uh, fuel wood program, but, but they don't need to acquire a permit. Um, so just wanna make sure folks are aware of that.
Okay, cool.
Just, just, okay, add, Pat? Just, just one little thing, it won't take long.
Sure.
Um, my, my concern, utmost concern is taking care of my people, as, as has been mentioned, uh, by Scott, Ted, and Kristen. Um, the morale issue is, is, is an issue. Uh, some people are doing quite well, uh, in this different working arrangement that we find ourselves in, and some people, um, are struggling a little bit. But I think what's happening is, as we get through this, people are making adjustments. Overall, I, I think we're doing better, um, especially since we've started, uh, some field surveys, there has been an uptake, uptick in the morale, uh, not just for those who are going into the field, but knowing that for those critical projects, we can commence those field activities with a certain protocol. So, um, you know, the morale is, is very important for everybody, just not for a government agency, but, uh, you know, for the private sector as well. And, uh, so hopefully we'll continue this trend of, of making the adjustments and getting better. Um, I do think we're in a good place, uh, here on the west side, um, but it's definitely been a journey, let me tell you. It has not been easy. I think Kristen alluded to that. There's a lot of stress in the system and, um, and hopefully, uh, you know, as time goes and the community starts opening up a little bit, which I've seen Weeville do just incrementally. Um, you know, that, that helps as well in, in seeing our community do a little bit. Just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, so, uh, down to the last major agenda item on some committee updates, so cannabis committee, anything to report there?
Yes, I think, um, and hopefully, Carol's concern about the growing of cannabis, which is illegal in the Bowerman area, gets addressed quickly. And the only other report I know of, um, is Larry Glass's report of trespass growing, very disturbing in Southern Trinity. Larry?
Yeah, um, I just want to relay that, uh, we're seeing a ramping up of, uh, foreign nationals, uh, arriving. It started in late March and early April. Um, lot of, you know, it looks, it looks like two, three years ago again, you know? So it looks like the outlaws have decided to ramp it up, assuming that there's gonna be little or no enforcement. So, uh, that's a bad thing. I will say, though, that a, a group that I'm working with called CROP is, um, has got a, uh, a bill in Congress to fund cleanups and more, uh, federal law enforcement, uh, for the public lands, and hopefully that, and it's bipartisan support, so hopefully that will start moving through Congress shortly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Sarah, you've been hanging in there for almost two hours now, and Ross and Susan. So how about the recreation committee? Who's gonna take the lead?
What would you guys like to hear about? Um, the, I can share about the Minersville project, uh, very briefly.
Yeah, so a couple, so Sarah, so if you can give an update on Minersville and whether the permit transfer for the marina actually, um, was completed, that would be great.
Absolutely. So maybe I'll start with the permit transfer. Um, so the permit transfer for the marina is, I would say, 95% complete on the Forest Service side. We have sent out the permit to Mr. Alfs, um, as of earlier this week, um, waiting for him to sign that and return it to us, and then Scott will countersign and that transfer will be complete. So that is a big accomplishment. That was a, a tremendous amount of work from the staff, um, with the, the vacancy that you noted on the, the agenda there on our financial accountant position. Um, as for Minersville, we did have some dialogue with the, uh, Department of Boating and Waterways about the parking area a little bit earlier, uh, before all of the COVID situation really hit us. And so they are going back to their engineers to come up with, uh, sort of alternate proposal that addresses some of the safety concerns that the Forest Service engineers had with the parking design, and are gonna come back with us with a sort of compromised design to move forward with, um, for contracting. So I would say that is, um, in a good place right now, and, uh, from what I understand, our California state partners are also being affected by COVID. So I would imagine that would be why we haven't heard from them much in the last month, but I think going forward, as things are starting to open back up, Minersville will be at the top of our program of work list for the district at least, in terms of figuring out where we're at and figuring out a plan to move forward. Um, let's see. Those were two, Carol, anything else?
Well, just, I think the committee emphasized that we really need, um, some sort of conversation with D-Bow about extending the grant because it doesn't look like we'll be able to do the design, the bid and the contract this year when the lake is low. So we really need to make sure we give ourselves a bigger window of opportunity so we don't lose a grant for the third time.
Absolutely, that's a great point, and I will certainly include that on the, the list when I reengage with D-Bow in terms of talking about that timeline, um, that it's gonna take us to get through contracting. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, so, um, Ross? I, I think that was Ross's hand, not Susan's hand. Go, Ross.
Um, yeah, Sarah, uh, we understand that Caltrans is gonna be working in the Stony Creek area, and they have that culvert we've been talking about then that needs modified. From about 20 feet high, it dumps out onto the, the proposed trail, and, uh, and we've contacted them for the engineers and everything, but, but this seems like a good time to, uh, reach out again and, and contact them to modify that culvert.
Can you get me the specifics on the modification you're wanting to see?
Um, sure. We don't want it to dump out from 20 feet high onto the trail. And Leslie, I already talked, contacted them a couple times, the engineers and everything. So it just needs to be extended and put on, on the ground or underground for a little bit, well, while longer, but, uh, yeah, that's it. We can, we can, uh, definitely take a look at it and, and, and talk to Caltrans about how they'd like to modify it and what the problem is. It would be a good time, cause they are working right across from Stony Creek.
Okay, great. Um, if, if you would like me to reach out as well, I would be happy to do so. Um, I would just need the, the sort of dialogue of what was communicated before about that, that culvert, so that's all.
And we would like you to reach out to them, and, uh, I'll, I'll get back to you with more, more of a plan.
Perfect, thank you.
So I just, I just wanted to let the collaborative know that, um, you know, we had a pretty extensive recreation committee meeting, and thanks to Sarah, cause we, we were, um, going all over the place. We talked about travel management plans, zone budgeting, um, status of campground, which thank you, thank you, thank you, were starting to open up. Um, uh, we talked about all the different trail issues, um, and, you know, the rack and, and the marina fees and kind of all the, um, how they're dealing with the COVID. For example, the, you know, restrooms are closed, like at Cedar Flat and Tan Bark and stuff, so I just noticed the NRA put the porta potties in there in the meantime to kind of keep, um, those rest areas going with no staff, so thank you. Um, but the last thing the committee really wanted to ask about was the position that does the accounting, the billing for marinas, cause, uh, my understanding is that, you know, they're filling the other positions. Um, you know, we had a list on the fisheries biologists and replacing Lisa Rann and things like that, but the accounting position is pretty specialized, super specialized for the marina work, and it's pretty low on the totem pole, and it's apparently not on the list right now to be replaced. So the recreation committee thought that, um, somehow we need to communicate the importance of filling that position, um, perhaps a letter from the collaborative, and so, um, maybe Scott or Sarah could help us figure out how to get that filled.
So, yeah, I, I know this position has been proposed, but I don't have, uh, the exact current status, so maybe Scott would have that.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, share your concern about that, that position and, and the priority there, um, that we, we've got a, a set of positions that, as a forest, we're, we're moving to propose through to the zone for consideration and then to the region. Uh, and at the same time, we're, we're looking at all of our, uh, positions and funding and, and budget basically for, for out years and, and knowing that we don't wanna be in a place with, with our collections where we've, um, overextended our ability to, to do the other important work with that money. So, um, that position is, uh, on our list and, and we're pursuing it, um, but no real update at this point. Uh, you know, I always welcome a letter from the collaborative, uh, you know, expressing, you know, your, your priorities and interests. Um, you know, we, we heard it here today, and, and thank you for that, Carol, but, um, uh, yeah, if you, uh, you wanted to do that more officially with a letter, uh, we'd be happy to receive that.
So, let me ask, so, kind of procedurally, does the collaborative send a letter, or do we send something to the board of supervisors to send a letter?
Yeah, that's how it
That's how, I think that's how it works. So this is on here as a potential action item if somebody wanted to give me a staff and a guidance.
Well, I have a question first, or maybe I'll, I'll make a motion that the collaborative send a letter to the board of supervisors to go to the Forest Service emphasizing our understanding that this position is, um, important in terms of the, the billing and the, um, accounting for the marinas and then bringing that money back to, um, Trinity and Shasta counties.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second it.
So Susan seconds the motion.
So then, I have a question, Scott. So are we understanding this correctly? I mean, I don't wanna, I, I know you have a lot of positions that need to be filled, and there are a lot of other priorities, but it seems like you'd wanna have someone collecting money, and if there isn't this position doing all this accounting, are, are you kind of, um, losing any revenue?
So, um, this, this position doesn't, doesn't change the amount of collections we, um, we get. It, it changes how good we get those collections into the right place, and, and, and also a lot of work associated with, like you say, the billings and, and also the, the financial determinations associated with marinas, you know, in terms of examples of, of the sale. Um, you know, what I, what I would tell you is that, uh, the agency is, um, going through a redo of its, uh, budget structure, uh, and our budget organization, and as a region, we're also doing that. Uh, and, and so we're, we're, uh, looks like we'll be going to a centralized, uh, budget organization for the region. Um, and then we recognize that the positions like this that are what we are calling, uh, program analysts, um, as opposed to a, a budget analyst, where they're working specifically within a program area, that, that those are needed, but, uh, it, like I said, it, it, we are proposing that as a forest, uh, and to the zone. Um, it's in the list of things that we put on the table. We are, uh, and we're working through that as a zone to, to get approval on that. Um, but, uh, it, it, we, we recognize that managing that program is, takes, takes skill and, and capacity.
Okay, so any, any other discussion? So I, I have just, well, no, we'll go to the, so easiest way to do this, I guess, would be, is there anybody who is, uh, opposed to this motion? Somehow, unmute and say your piece. Okay, so I'll say that the motion passed unanimously. So Scott or Sarah, a question, to whom would the letter be best direct, addressed in the US Forest Service?
I, I'm thinking my fellow forest supervisors in the zone.
Okay, so. Well, that, well, that's what I was thinking, you know, I mean, there's not a chairman of the zone, or?
There's one right now, yeah.
You're funny, Scott, you're real funny.
Uh, no, I think, I think, uh, to, to, to me, it would be perfect.
Okay.
And I can share it with my
Okay, and I can share it with my my zone mates.
Okay, your zone mates, that's good.
I mean, just on the recreation committee, the bottom line is, you know, we want to see continued recreation in Trinity Lake. So we're concerned that, you know, there was the, you know, the the gap until some of the authorizations were reauthorized in terms of just money coming back for funding things like the floating bathrooms and maintenance and all that stuff. And we definitely just don't want to lose any dollar. Right now, the boat ramps are packed. I mean, there's so many people out on the lake and we don't even know if people are paying their ramp fees. So the more eyes on that, the better.
Right, okay. So last kind of, so I I don't think we have any member of the public for public comment. Facilitation team, only thing I've really got is, you know, as far as I know, at this point, let's assume the next meeting will be the same kind of virtual format and it would be in July 3rd, Friday in July. So I guess that'd be the plan at the moment. Go ahead, Kelly.
It's July 17th.
July 17th. And then for that, are there, right now, are there any particular agenda items that we should make sure that I get on the agenda? Update on Acre Wood Field Trip, would that be something that would be good?
Yes, well, we'll have a lot more to say about Acre Wood by that point, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, that that'd be good, Pat. I I think maybe on the agenda now, given what Joe was talking about earlier, there should be two reports from a fuel breaks work group.
Right, I I kind of noted that there are, I need to make a distinction between two different groups. Yeah.
Yeah, call us the OG fuel breaks.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Joe, for the cannabis issue, do you think you'll be able to communicate with Sheriff Saxon and figure out any options for the cannabis grows on Bowerman Ridge? Because they're hauling a lot of stuff up there right now.
Yeah, that's a good point, Carol, I will. I'd like to talk to Scott and Sarah on that as well. So, you know, we've been busy.
And I think I, yeah.
Yeah.
I sent along some language to you and Sarah, I believe, also, end of last week in in an email.
Yeah.
So, okay, and I mean, the goal is, again, to try to keep these to a couple of hours. So I may try to work on a more targeted agenda to some degree so that we aren't, you know, repeating ourselves each meeting. Do we, we have been delaying now for almost a year, the the discussion on the oak restoration. Do we want to try to actually have a presentation or a set of presentations? That would probably make the meeting a little bit longer.
We could take a stab at it. I know that Krista and myself have been sort of asked to to work on that.
And then Nick from the Watershed Center.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll and maybe we we just need to have a conversation, emails amongst ourselves and kind of frame the time, how much time and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we were wanted to do something real focused so that it.
Yeah, yeah. Or you think you'll have your range person on by then?
Maybe, but I it would be too soon to really task her with any.
Okay, 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 any anybody else, any other agenda items?
Diane is Diane Richards is.
Okay, Diane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm kind of new at this Zoom thing. Well, anyways, I just want to say thank you for hopefully getting that on the agenda so we can move the oak restoration forward, even if it's not the best situation. We really should get it going and I thank you very much, everybody that's supporting it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Oh, so I I guess, Joe, maybe an update, maybe you'll have something. So you and I have communicated back and forth a little bit about the alert, the wildfire camera kind of program, and maybe you'll have, you could have an update on that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we we can talk about this for me. Yeah, I don't have anything for this meeting.
Right, no, I realize not for this meeting, but by July. Yeah, and the governor's budget, you know, he's focusing on wild COVID and wildfire. So there's more money for remote sensing. So let we'll we'll have maybe something. Okay, so if no one had, anybody have anything else for the good of the order? If not, I want to thank Kelly for hosting and getting this kind, making this work and all of you for your patience with doing the Zoom virtual kind of meetings. Really thank you. And I know it, I know it's, this is stressful for everybody, you know, what we're in. But at least I think we're beginning to see some lightening up of of our abilities to kind of get back out and work in the woods and that sort of thing. So thank you, everybody.
Jennifer had one thing real quick that I just picked up on the chat she just sent over. And she said to follow up on Tom's question.
Yeah.
That Holy Peak sale was about 1.2 million board feet with some load tags still out. So there was some some.
I'll tell Tom on the field trip on Tuesday, that was 1.2 million board feet?
Yes.
Tom's there, we we see him. You hear it, Tom? Yeah, okay, cool. Okay, with that, everybody.
Oh, and Christine has one other thing.
Oh, okay.
She says, the final rule for the Fisher listing is available today in the federal register.
Didn't include it.
Okay. Again, thank you very much, everybody, enjoy your weekend.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. You're welcome, bye.
Bye, everyone.